I'm gonna pretend I'm Paula. Okay, tell me what you want. It might be illegal.
Just kidding. She's a lot nicer.
So, good news is the chairs that are gonna be ours for the aerobics room are here. They came in today, so we won't have to be moving chairs around. Isn't that great?
Yeah.
And if anybody's been with me for over, it'll be seven years in the fall. When we first bought those chairs, they were three inches, and when you sat on them, they felt like a rock. Right? And those are all smooshy. So wait till you try the new ones. You won't wanna sit in them. Just kidding. I just wanna remind everyone that we're having our annual Step into Spring Walk next Friday. So the first part you gotta do for me is just do a sundance. So no rain. But I'm hoping all of you come. If you want, there's a lot of different parts to it. You don't have to walk the whole loop. You can do half a loop. You can cut through. You can do inside. We want just participation to get you out and move. I do wanna tell you that the Step Challenge for February, we had over 50 sheets this year, which I thought was just incredibly great. We want you to move. I want you to move. Right? It's the number one thing to help with fall prevention. So reminder, if you wanna volunteer, we're bringing down people from the terrorists, the assisted living, and also the nursing home. So the more, the merrier. If you have AIDS, they can come with you. But we just really want you to come and have a good day. There's lunch afterwards. And again, we're just gonna have great weather, aren't we?
Yes.
Oh, I love that. And you're all coming, right?
Yes.
All yours, Paula.
No rain on Friday.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the introduction of the proposed Resident Council slate.
Straight up.
Want to in or hold?
Doesn't matter. Thanks, Paula.
Straight up to your...
As you know, we've got an excellent slate of nominees for the new Residence Council. And I have asked, as Paula indicated, I have asked all of those nominees to come up, take a couple of minutes, and introduce themselves. But before that, there's always a "before that," right? Before that, I wanna review a whole unscripted series of events that got us to this point. The nominating committee put together an excellent job of nine candidates for the seven positions on the Residence Council. It was in the March of Beverlywic Bolton. Well, by the time of the March, by the time of the March town meeting, two of the people had withdrawn for reasons of their own. I mean, that's okay, but they had withdrawn. I wasn't terribly worried, because we still had seven for the seven positions. And maybe it was even better, because we don't have to run an election. But then a few days later, a third candidate withdrew. So I was a little concerned at that point. I asked the members of the Residence Council to give some serious thought to their friends and neighbors. And there might be one somewhere who really wanted to be on the Residence Councils one time and hadn't volunteered yet. And at least in my case, the two I asked turned me down. But Maxine Matusky was actually successful in getting an excellent candidate. So we're having, we're back to having seven. Therefore, I wrote a memo, this memo, and I asked that it be copied, had copies put in everybody's mailbox about a week and a half ago with all the names on it. And, well, we'll have those people introduce themselves. But one final comment, to avoid any future bizarre events of the sort that we just had, the Residence Council's in the process of revising all the bylaws to prevent these kinds of happenings again. It will be put before everybody for approval or whatever, in due course. And I think we're fairly close. So, to those introductions, you want everybody to come up here?
I wasn't sure how you planned it, but if that's what you were thinking. All seven at once, or what do you think? Or four?
Doesn't matter. If you wanna be on Channel 1391, if we had a Channel 1391, you need to come up here. Okay, let me just call out the names. First is Helen Barber. Helen is one of the returning members of the Council.
Come on down.
Come on down. Seems like a megachurch.
Oh, dear. Hi, I'm Helen Barber. And as Frank said, I've had the honor of serving on the Council this past year. And I am delighted to think about returning this year. It's an honor. I've learned a lot. And I just thank you very much. It's a privilege to be part of the Council. And as I say, I gained much. So thank you. And who is next?
Who is next is Marilyn Condesenti. Also returning...
I never use one of these.
Uh-huh.
I never use one of these. Hi, my name is Marilyn Condesenti, and I too have served this past year on the Resident Council. And I have enjoyed it very much. I have felt a part of the community by doing this. And it made me feel that I linked myself with my fellow family. I was responsible for the building and grounds. And as you could see, every month I made notes. Oh, you can't hear me?
Just raise it up a little bit, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. So I've enjoyed it very much, and I hope to continue for the next year. Thank you.
And we now have a light bulb in our streetlight, Marilyn. Harriet, is Harriet here? Okay, she didn't make it back. Harriet had a sudden conflict arise, or rise yesterday.
There she is.
Oh, no, she just wanted to make the grand entrance.
Jeez. Well, you wanna introduce yourself anyway? Okay. Everybody knows Harriet, I guess. Okay, next Karen Green. Who will be the newest?
I was gonna try to answer all the questions. It started with, how long have you been here? So my husband Barry and I came in November of '23. So we are about five and a half months that we've been here at Beverlywic. My education. I have a BS in math and computer science from SUNY Albany. What did I do with these degrees? I programmed, or worked as a programmer, analyst, computer scientist. Today, they call you an IT specialist. Worked on mainframes, worked on PCs. But I also taught. I taught at SUNY Albany, St. Rose, Siena. I taught a lot of introductory courses. So what would happen is, if you saw my resume, you wouldn't hire me, because you'd think, this woman can't keep a job. But I would, I would teach, because I really enjoy teaching the introductory courses. But then I'd get really tired of students complaining. So, and I'm sure some of you teachers can relate to this.
Oh, I can relate to that.
And I'd go back, at least computers don't talk back to me. So I'd go back to programming for a while, and then I'd get tired, and I'd look for human interaction. So there I was. Sort of this resume that goes back and forth. Until I found a job I absolutely loved in my early 50s. I supported the lab information system that runs the public health labs for New York State, always where I got to meet Perry Smith. Our system sent his people data. I loved that job. I worked with wonderful, interesting people, and I never got bored. I don't wanna go on too much here. What am I, oh, so I did a lot of volunteer work. I served at the Shenandoah School Board. I served now on the Troy Area United Ministries Board. Served as the Friends at Chamber Music Board. What do I like, what do we like to do for hobbies? Well, before our backs went, we kayaked, biked, cross-country skied, snowshoes. We try to do a little of this still. We have a seasonal house up in Argyle on a small lake. So I get to walk around the lake, paddle, which I love, swim. I'm a puzzle holic, so you can usually find me up on the north, the upstairs puzzle table. My neighbors would tell you I hang out there a lot with my friends. Anyways, I'm really looking forward to serving on the Resident Council, getting to know a lot of you. We love being here. We've met such lovely and interesting people, and I look forward to getting to know all of you better. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. The questions you referred to were some suggestions I made that people might use introducing themselves. You were not required to do all of them now. Linda, Linda McElroy.
Like Karen, I followed through and I did my homework.
Good.
So I'll, I know many of you, but I'll share some information maybe you don't know. And for those of you who don't know me, you'll know me a little better. Like many people, I had parents who raised me with the belief that it was my responsibility to leave this world a better place than I found it by helping others. So since I was a young girl in third grade, I knew that for me, that was in the field of education. So for more than 20 years in my adult life, I was a primary teacher, where I tried to improve the room of my classroom students. Then I was encouraged to become an elementary principal, where I found I could affect teachers and students across the school. And finally, I was asked to be an elementary supervisor, where I had the opportunity to improve the lives of students and teachers across the district. However, no matter what level I was at, it felt it was my responsibility to get things done, while I also nurtured an atmosphere of respect and dignity, which I believe is imperative in order for people to flourish. Now, I didn't realize how much that impact had on people till one day, when I was a fairly new administrator. A teacher pulled me to the side and said, "You know, Mrs. McElroy, if anybody here wants to get something done, they come to you." Whoa, I didn't know that. That surprised me a bit. But I thought about it, and the truth of it is, I have never, Jim will attest to this, I have never had much patience for endless complaining. Rather, if there's a problem, I try to do something about it. So, fast forward now, 25 years. Jim and I moved from central Pennsylvania two and a half years ago to be near our daughter's family. And many of you have met our granddaughters, Cora and Ella, who love to come to Beverlywic, because they love taking part in activities here and staying overnight in our cottage. As a matter of fact, Ella's coming this weekend, so it'll be great fun. However, when we moved to Beverlywic, the cottage wasn't available. So for a year, we lived in an apartment in the south wing of the big house. And it was a wonderful experience. Bruce and June were our mentors, but we had many other amazing mentors in that area who taught us about Albany and especially about Beverlywic. I have vivid memories of being at the South Wing happy hours, and if you don't know this, they are held... It's sort of a, what, a secret? Maybe not. They're held... The administration sometimes walks out the door on their way to their cars and sees someone sitting there, and they just smile and wave at us, and it's fine. But every Friday evening before dinner, these are held. And it was a great place to learn about Beverlywic. It wasn't long till I heard Nina Reich and others use the term "the Beverlywic way." In the midst of the conversation, you would hear someone say, "Well, naturally, that is just the Beverlywic way." Or, "That is not the Beverlywic way to do it." So from that group, I learned that the Beverlywic way was a term to describe the atmosphere that had been cultivated since the founding of this community. I learned that the Beverlywic way means to be welcoming, considerate, compassionate, knowledgeable, gracious, proactive, and positive. Yet, the reality is that any atmosphere must be cultivated and monitored, or it changes. And for Beverlywic, that would be tragic. So as you consider new council members, you need to know that I do not see myself as someone who is greatly talented or learned. Rather, I just believe my role in council would be to work with the administration, to do what I can do to maintain and even improve where necessary and possible, the Beverlywic way. And for me, that's just another way to make a difference in this world.
I know.
Thank you, Linda. If you don't wanna listen to complaints, though, maybe you should reconsider about being on the Resident Council. Take my word for it. Jim Smith, I don't know if it's... Oh, you are there. I couldn't see you, Matt. You're behind.
Hiding in the corner.
You're hiding.
You want the wireless on?
Ken, yeah, is this her?
Thank you. I guess all of you know what I look like. I've been around for five years, so my wife and I moved here at the behest of my daughter. We were actually looking at facilities of this type in another state. And although they were nice facilities, my daughter said she couldn't get to us if we had an emergency. So we decided not to move to that state. And since that time, I have, I have a very bad back. And that's why I have this scooter that you often will see me riding around on, trying to run over people, which I'm anxious for. Anyway, I grew up in Lake Erie in Sandusky, Ohio, which is a small resort community. Although the resort has outgrown the city. And it's more famous for the resort than it is for the city at this point in time. Anyway, I've been fortunate to know most of the people here. Although in the last year, there are quite a few new people whose names I would like to say I oftentimes don't remember, but that's more my problem than it is, you know, the time that I've been here. For 42 years, I was a city manager. I don't know if you know what that's like, but city managers like a mayor, except you, you're basically working for the mayor and the city council. I enjoy doing that very much, actually. Kept at it for 42 years, it must have been for some reason. You all met me, I think, except for the new people. And we've enjoyed living at Beverlywic. My wife's here somewhere, probably sitting in the back.
Yep.
She's done for a number of years. And as I've progressed through my career, she's always taken the backseat. And she's been very, very, very helpful to me. And that's about it, because I think most of you do know me.
Thank you, Jim. I was chairman of our towns before we moved here, Towns ZBA, zonie Board of Appeals, for 13 years, and we had a town manager.
Yep.
It's such a change from a mayor or a superintendent. It's very good. Last, but certainly not least, Kate Storms.
Hi. I've been here a little bit less than two years. And if you wanna know my whole background, you go to the Beverlywic Bulletin for July 2002. I spent a long time writing that article, so, page 11. There were two things, as I thought about what I could do on council that might be helpful. I spent most of my career as a research librarian. And the research that I was doing was for government, lawyers, other libraries, towns. So this was at the state library, but I also worked for, by the time I was done, I was librarian or close to an information person for 10 different agencies in all three branches. So I know your New York government structured pretty well. So information, that's one thing that I'm good at finding. And then the other thing is that along the line, I had a parallel career as a property manager. And I had as many as nine apartments in the mansion area of Albany. And I sold the last one in December, so I'm still sort of a recovering landlord. Along the line, yes, I learned how to be a property manager, but I also learned an awful lot about landscaping, plants, invasives, composting, the things that, where we can work with Mother Nature to make things more beautiful and more, well, to enrich our environment. And that's something that I've really become quite passionate about. And so sharing the information, my ability to find information, and my desire and willingness to share Beverlywic with Mother Nature. That's what I would bring.
Thanks, Karen. One more.
In case you don't recognize me, I was the person in the hat at singing the Gnu song.
As you can see, I think we have an excellent, competent, experienced slate of people for the new council. They take office on June 1st. So those of us on the current council will be studiously working on revising those bylaws over our last month or so. Thank you all for your attention, and I'll turn it over to Paula.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you to all our nominees. I think we're gonna have a very successful Resident Council. We'll vote next month. But I just wanna say, you know, a few things about the Resident Council. I've asked other communities, you know, how they do it, what they do, and I think ours seems to be the most robust. Some don't have a Resident Council at all. They have a meeting like this. But there are definitely a lot of benefits to the Resident Council. Although, you know, I think sometimes people think it's equivalent to a board, a board of directors. It's not. You know, there's not that, you know, no financial decisions are being made, but it is an advisory council. But I think that's so important. I don't think advisory, you know, is even a strong enough word. So it's something that certainly holds me accountable to account to the Resident Council, you know, every month. And different portions of the Resident Council also meet with different department heads. So, you know, there's that level of accountability right down the line. So I find it very, very valuable, and I'm glad that we have a lot of interest and continue to put out good slates that we can have in the Resident Council. So thank you for your volunteer work with that dedication. So I appreciate it. Okay. Cory, do you wanna talk about the text survey?
Oh, yes.
Where we're at, what we're gonna use it?
Where we're at, what we're gonna use it.
Yeah.
So, yes, I put out a text survey at all five of our communities. I wanna commend Beverlywic, because out of all that I sent out, we had 190 emails in record already, so I only had to send out like 32 paper copies. So thank you, because that saves me from having to input all those paper copies. I haven't looked as of today to see what the response rate was as of yet, but it was pretty good. I'll be collecting all that data, putting it together, I think, June town meeting.
Okay.
I will do a present, just a short presentation on what we found, what we discovered. Thank you for everyone who made comments. Those are just as helpful as whether you like or don't like something. And if there are comments that I need to follow up on, I certainly will follow up with those individuals on things that they said. But, and today is kind of the last day. I know we put the 15th, which was Monday, but if anybody hasn't responded or still has their paper copy and wants to like drop it off by the end of today, that would be great.
Anything here?
No.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to make you the face of it.
Oh, yes. So how many have noticed the change on the Touchtown logo? Good! So, yes, so probably about two years ago, a company by the name of Unigest, which is actually kind of the number one company in the world for arena jumbaltrons. So when you go and they had, you can see a game on a big screen, they bought Touchtown. And so it's taken them this long, so they are kind of taking over. So it'll now be referred to as Unigest Community App. So, and it's got the new logo, so it's a U instead of the T. If your phone, or your iPad, or your tablet automatically updates at night, you may come in the next morning or on the next morning and not see that T anymore. So look for a U. It's still kind of the same tealish colors with a yellow U. And if it hasn't updated, if you just go into your app store, whether it's Apple or Google Play, and search, you can still search for Touchtown Community App, and it'll then show you the new app, and you just update. It'll usually say "update," and it'll do it for you. What else am I supposed to?
Meal credits. The server got rebooted just after.
Okay. Anyone who was having problems getting in to check your meal credits? I guess that server had been updated, so now it should be okay. And it wasn't just affecting here, it was affecting some of our other communities. In-house?
In-house TV?
Yeah.
Nothing?
No, right.
We're waiting on Spectrum?
Yeah. So we are still waiting on Spectrum to come. I worked last week and got a workaround for the hardware. The two computers that run Channel 3.1 and Channel 3.2, our in-house stations, were connected to the hardwired system, which was cut during the switchover, which we're still waiting for them to fix. But we're not at our 30 days until the 20th, so... We do know that, we do know that Spectrum has the construction order. That has been verified. So, but I was able to find a workaround to get the computers back online. Now there seems to be an issue with the insertion gear that pushes out those two channels. So I'm waiting to hear when Spectrum's gonna be able to come and fix that. Any questions for me? Yes?
I am not, not technically very adept, but is there some way that we can get a simple list of the channels from 1 to 200, rather than having to go into 10 and whatever that thing is?
The ten point one and ten point?
Yeah.
So, yes, I have to update because, so that channel listing that we give out at the time of the changeover was the listing that I was given by Spectrum last June, when we did the first community, Glen Highland Meadows. Since then, they had, which some of you may remember, Charter Communications that owned Spectrum had contract dispute with Disney. So some of those channels were kicked off, but they never notified me that, oh, your list changed. And you may notice too, I haven't heard whether or not it's been resolved, but Spectrum was also under contract negotiations with Paramount, which covers a bunch of channels. So there could be other channels that just disappear. So that list I do have to update. Unfortunately, the technology survey had taken priority, so I haven't done that. But I've been hearing from people that they would rather just have like a full alphabetical listing, because the numbers are all new, so the numbers really at this point don't mean a lot to people, but a full alphabetical listing, so you could look for ABC or Fox and just look alphabetically. So that's how it'll be put out.
We have that. You did that.
Kind of. But we got to update it based on the changes, so. Any other questions for me? Okay.
Along the line of surveys too, so we're working on pushing out a resident satisfaction survey, so that should be coming soon. Kathy's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on that. We just finally had some high agreement on all the questions, and it's not just Beverwick, it's going to all the communities. So we'll be pushing that out similar to the same, I'm assuming it's going to be similar to the way the technology one?
Yes.
Went, yeah. So I know it's been a while since we've done one, so we're very much looking forward to doing it. So hopefully, stay tuned, and we'll let you know when those dates are going to happen. Couple other announcements, so Drug Take Back Day. So Sue is collecting drugs. She's our dealer in the back of the room. Sue has been getting a lot of strange baggies lately, but, so the last day to give Sue the drugs is four twenty-five by three P M., so she will take them back. Also, it's very helpful to her, if it's in a bottle, empty it into a, some sort of a Ziploc bag or something, because she's going to have to do that if you don't. So, so if you give her those bottles, she's just putting them in a bag. Otherwise, she'd have a truck full. So, so if you can think of that, that would be very helpful. So four twenty-five, three P M. I did also want to announce that we are going to be changing our main doors, so the three main doors on each wing, we are going to be changing to fobs. So it will not be the keys to get into there, so it'll, every resident will be issued a fob to get into those doors. The fobs will be programmed into the computer, it's much more secure. So if somebody leaves, we just take that fob right out. Same with the staff, with the staff, it'll work, I don't have mine on, but it will work with our badges, so we can come in and out of those doors, it'll be just a scanner on them. So I don't have the timeframe around that, but that will be coming soon, that we're going to be installing that. So it's not going to be every door, so you're still going to need some keys, but it will be the main ones in each wing. Any questions on that? Okay.
What day?
What?
What day?
I don't know the day yet. Yeah. So we just got all the pricing and all that from ITZ, they're going to be coming and doing the work. Yeah.
Would they work if you come in later to the main door?
It's not going to work at the main door.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Yes.
Will the reader be high enough?
For family members?
Hang on one second.
Will the reader be high enough for someone in a wheelchair?
I don't know that we've even gotten as far as to where that reader will be placed, but we can certainly consider that.
Like at Glen Highland, they're usually about waist height, so.
Yes.
Can you get ones for family members?
So right now, we're going to start with residents, so the idea again behind it, convenience and security. So we really want to have some strict controls on where those fobs are. So we're going to start with issuing it to you first. If we find that there's a need, we may be able to still do it, especially if we can track everyone and know, we can deactivate all of two eighty-fives at one time, you know, whatever. However, we're going to track it in the system, so it's still new, but we're going to start with residents first.
Will a key work in that?
A key will still, I believe, the key will still be there. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. All right, any more questions on that? So again, we'll have some more detailed information as we know timing around it. As of June first, we're no longer going to be doing resident check cashing. We have, did we put out a memo, or are we? So yes, we put out the memo. If you, if we need to add additional transportation services to additional banks, we will. So if anybody has any concerns and about their bank, let us know. Yes?
One of the residents here asked me to ask the question or to make the statement that she is not able to go on the bus and made the suggestion that Beverwick install an ATM.
So the, if you couldn't hear, the suggestion was to perhaps install an ATM. We've had ATMs here in the past, I guess, but the volume was not high enough for the ATM company or whoever to keep that, or whoever, what sponsored ATM bank it was. There wasn't enough transactions to justify having it.
There might be more transactions.
So there might be, so that was something else that we talked about, we could consider that. And I think I've talked to the person that you're referring to, so if anybody has some major concerns, please call me, we can certainly talk through that. You know, and I think one of the issues was, we figured out like, what was the cash actually needed for, and that could actually be a check written too. So is the cash really needed, I guess, is the question. But sometimes people just like their cash, so. Yes?
Why are you discontinuing that service?
So we're discontinuing it because there's not a great need anymore for people to be cashing the checks. There's not a lot, there's not a lot of need for cash. It is certainly, it's a lot of work on our end, it's a lot of work on the finance end. So when we're sending that off to finance, plus it's a liability if checks bounce, tracking purposes, so a lot of work for a need that's diminishing. Any other questions? Okay. Technology survey, we talked about. Transportation, so we updated the transportation policy. It's not really new, but the transportation is really for licensed medical facilities only. We did have some that were in a gray area, we did have some requests to, you know, I need a, I have a physician's order for a massage, but it's to Kimberly's Day Spa. So, you know, things like that, you know, we can't do. So it will be to licensed medical professionals where we'll transport to. Does that include what?
Dentists?
Yes, we do transport to dentists, yes. Yeah.
Will you still transport to the train station and the airport?
Yes, yes, I should have included that, you're right. So the question was, will it still be airport and train station? Yes, we still provide transportation there. Yes.
Is there a distance limitation on transportation?
It's fifteen, fifteen miles, correct? Oh, Ashley's in the back. Yes, the distance limitation is fifteen miles.
Oh, you should be ten.
Yes.
Physical therapists, they are licensed medical.
So physical therapy, Ashley, we do, correct?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yes, we go to PT.
Yes, so they're clinical, they're licensed, it would be PT, yes. Anything else? Okay. So renovation updates, the dining room continues to go as scheduled. The acoustical panels are up, so they're working along to open that main portion of the dining room, which I believe is scheduled for the beginning of May. So once that portion is opened, you know, everything will be back to our normal seating. And the artwork and the lamps are going, did they?
They're tomorrow again.
Okay, so this has changed twice this week so far. So we're hoping tomorrow, if not, it's going to be the eighth and ninth of May. Some plants, we took the plants that were out of the planters in the dining room. We've been dispersing them throughout the house, we are saving some that we will put back into the dining room. The art room, we still need a counter. And the sink, right now, they took out a cabinet, so all the piping on the sink is exposed, so they're going to be putting something that hides that piping. Resurfacing of the shuffleboard, we're going to be doing and adding with a new sign. Also the same with the putting green. So we run into an issue with the putting green, because when we started this, it was like, it was the fall. We had somebody came out, they did the scope of work, they gave us a quote, and now they're not calling us back. So we might have to start over to get somebody to work on that putting green, but it will be done too, that's in the plans. Library signs for the shelves are on order. Also, we're adding additional shelves to the library. I know a lot of books were placed on the wings this weekend or last weekend. And I think that's it with the renovation updates, right? Nothing else? Does anyone have any questions on, yes?
I'm curious about pillows and valances in all the little?
Yes. So we have told the designer the questions about pillows and some of that accent pieces. So we have told the designer that we want that, so working on that as well. I don't have a timeframe around it, but.
Okay. And the second question, could you clarify what chairs will be used in the dining room?
Are they in the bistro now, the ones that are going to be used?
It's blue. It's like a blue aqua.
I don't know if they're out yet, we have them, but I don't know if they're out and about yet.
There are two types of chairs that are being used in the Albany room.
Okay.
And one, one has wheels, and is a little more fit for, I'm going to say, senior bodies. And the other one is, uh, I'm trying to just try.
So if it does not have wheels?
Yeah.
Okay, so all the dining room chairs are going to have wheels on the, on the front. So if there, if the two ones that you've seen, one has wheels and one does not, it's the one with the wheels that's going to be in the dining room. They will all have wheels, and more fit, and it sounds like the better option.
Yes, the one is just, I've heard many people complain, your feet don't touch the floor.
Okay.
It's too deep, it's very uncomfortable.
Okay. Yes.
Are there any plans for what is now commonly known as the useless room? Was going to be our coffee shop, I think?
Yeah. So there is coffee in there. If you walk by now, there's coffee in there. So now, the original plan was that continental breakfast was going to be served where? In the bistro area, which is the south dining room. We did talk about that, actually came up at resident council and said, we kind of like where breakfast is being served. It's much more of a social event, where if it were in the back of the dining room, it would be less social. People are just going to take their food and go. So I was talking with Matt and the dietary team to keep that and utilize that space more for the continental breakfast, and then the coffee will be available in there throughout the day. So you can have, there is supposed to be some seating in there, so we are still waiting for some tables, small tables and chairs, so it's not going to be a ton of seating in there. So then, if the continental breakfast will be available in there, you could use limited seating in there as well as the lounge area, and that whole area could be used for breakfast. Yes?
I don't think it's good to keep all that food there behind the bar, and it's taken away that area that residents had to meet before dinner, and cottage people and apartment people, and that's taking away space. I don't agree, I think it's unsanitary, because it sits there, the fruit sits there, and we don't have access, I mean, I feel I should not go behind to use a lot of that we have there.
So the concern is about the food being in the lounge area, the bar area. So it's really taking away from the intent of what that area was, and that's true. So that's why we're saying that area that is across from there, that has nothing in it currently, other than like to-gos and things like that, where that's set up, that's the area we want to place the food. And I agree with you, even just aesthetically, it's not nice to look at as you're walking by, and you see that the bar area looks cluttered. So that's where we want to be able to serve the continental breakfast out of there. People can still eat in the lounge area. And then, you know, once we don't need it for dinner seating as well, you know, then it can be what it was intended for, for people to gather before a meal and use that space.
Good.
Yes?
It seems like there should have been, they need a refrigerator, and it seems like they could use the sink.
In the bar. Oh, in the cafe.
Oh, in the cafe.
In the cafe?
Yeah.
Where the coffee is.
Where the bar is.
Yeah, there's no sink in there.
Yeah.
And water.
And many times, you just need something right away to clean up something.
So it would be in the area, and again, we can work out the details of how we want to do it, but we want to be mindful of, it seems like people are enjoying the social aspect of having it in that area, but also the intent of what the lounge was. So, you know, a refrigerator could certainly be added somewhere near that area if we needed to. But there was never a sink in the back of the cafe where it was originally, but there was a sink in the area. You know, so there's sinks in the area, but we can certainly figure out those details. Anything else on that, or in renovations?
Is there a schedule, date scheduled for the shuffleboard renovation?
No, the question is a date scheduled for the shuffleboard renovation, and the answer is no. Still trying to find a vendor for it. So a lot of, a lot of the vendors, these are two small jobs, the putting green and the resurfacing of the shuffleboard, so. Yes?
Are we saving on a waiter by ruining this?
So that was another question that I discussed with Diane, the question is saving on a waiter. And I did ask Glenn and Matt that, and they did say somebody's always here anyway. But if we think about pre-COVID, for those of you that were here, there was never, there was never a staff member staffing that area. It was self-serve and you went through. However, they're here anyway, so I don't know if it will be like it is now, where they're constantly there, but somebody kind of checking and replenishing and helping as needed, I think. But, I think that will be the plan. All right, anything else on that? Yes?
Do you have a date for the art room counter and sink?
Uh, I don't know that we have one, no. No, they haven't given us yet.
It can still be messy.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Old business. Oh, so we are still going to be moving forward with the Point Click Care messaging, so I know we've had our issues. So for those who aren't aware of what I'm talking about, the Point Click Care messaging is our ability to push out information quickly if we need to. You all, or most of you, signed up how you want to be notified. We know we've had issues, and that we're still waiting on additional training with Patrick Clark, who is an IT person at a divisional level, so it's a work in progress, but, you know, we're moving forward with that. The main problem we had with our last test was anybody who opted to receive a phone call, they couldn't understand it. And it wasn't just us, they've been using this at other communities, and everybody had the same issue, where that, it was all garbled, and, so that doesn't really help in the event of an emergency, where you can't hear. So that doesn't really help in the event of an emergency, where you can't hear. It seems like, for the most part, with a few exceptions, people are getting texts, so that's helpful. I'm not sure about the email, but I know you're not. I said for the most part. So we're gonna continue to work on it, and we will do some more testing of the system. The caller ID, so we're, we received verification from AT&amp;T that they got our request. So it is still, we're at their mercy a little bit, and I hate standing up here. So the caller ID is, when you're calling out, it's coming up as Trinity Health. We need it to come up as Beverwick, and that's what we're working towards. So we're waiting on them, the ball is in their court at this moment. So I know it's been a long time, and we have to wait for that, much like Spectrum, so... I hate that it's not in our control, but I can assure you that it's not something we forget about. We stay on top of it for whatever it's worth. Anything else that anyone wanted to bring up? Yes?
Just one more. The library has this clear, clear glass, and I've heard it said that they're thinking about frosting that, and it seems like that's a bad idea.
Okay.
Because it really ruins the aesthetic of the clear glass and books.
So the comment is that right now, the library has the clear glass all around, and we are going to put some film on, not the entire, but where they have the three doors together. The plan is to put the film on there, and the other one will remain glass. Your comment, I understand that does take away from some of the aesthetics, but I also feel like being in that room, sometimes you kinda feel like you're in a fishbowl and... I don't know. I don't know. I think it's a balancing act, but I hear your comment as well. But the plan is, yes, to put some film on there. Some of it will still be glass and still be open. And it's not completely, so the film is kind of...
You can see through.
Yeah, it's opaque, so you can see through some of it, but it will also provide a little privacy if you wanted it in there. Yes?
If you just had that film go up like four feet, that would provide some privacy, but would also provide a view of the inside.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can look at that and just see if they can do half of it. Okay?
Mala?
Yeah?
When you talk about this quote film, unquote, is this something that could be put on and taken off? Or is this something that's going to be etched into the glass?
It's, the question is, can the film be put on and take off or etched? It's a film that is on, it's not etched. It's a film that goes on the door.
Okay, so if it's for some reason you wanted to change it or remove it, you could.
I would think so, I don't know what's involved with that. I mean, it's, it's not... It's what?
Not easily.
Yeah.
Cause it's like super stuck.
You have it, right?
Yeah.
On Glen Highland?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's on there pretty good, so it's not gonna wear and tear. So I don't know how easily it could be removed. I could, I could certainly ask them that, but I think purposefully, it's not meant to be removed that easily. Any other questions? Are we ready for a joke? Okay, no?
I agree with Nick. I, I think the clear glass is a...
Clear glass?
Much better way to go.
Take a boat.
Yeah. We could.
No, it's a design.
Yeah. It's a design.
Yeah, it is. We could certainly put up, at least a picture we could put out there of the sample, where it's not, you know, it's not a solid thing. It's a design, I don't know what ours was.
It looks like the panels in the dining room.
So they're like a tree, so it's kinda like the birch trees.
It's like a, the tree is white and goes up, so there's a lot of clear in there that you can see through, and the tree itself is opaque rather than, you know, solid. So it's not, it's not the complete masking.
So I will tell you Glen Highland, not in their library, but their new bistro area when they did the renovation have two sliding doors like that. And they actually look like frosted birch trees. So they go up, but you can still clearly see through them and everything. But the main reason they did it is so no one would walk through the glass or ride a scooter through the glass. Because when those are closed, they're just big glass panels. And so that's why they wanted them on theirs, but...
So it's a design.
It's a design.
It is a design.
It's not just a solid frosted panel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah. Yes?
The nice thing about the library the way it is is there's like more light in the common area. It just, it just seems there's more room, even though we can't, you know, we wouldn't all go running in there, and we can't, we can't, it looks as if we can't use it on First Friday for wine and cheese, but just having it, oh, I don't know, it adds to the space. So I'll just, that'll be my last comment.
All right, I appreciate that. The square footage, I think, is bigger than the space that it was.
It is.
The books, not too much, but yes. The books, we were able to show less, but... Okay. Yes? Yeah?
I live in an apartment that overlooks the parking lot, and at the, there's the grass area. There's been this trailer, white trailer, and it's been there for months. I was wondering if, why it was there, what it was for, and if it's ever going to be removed.
Yeah, it is part of the construct, it's what?
The electrical guys.
The electrical?
Name of the trailer.
Yeah. There's been, there's been a lot of, the contractors, that's where they're putting a lot of their stuff in the south, so as they're done, it'll come out. There's been some dumpsters there as well too, and, yeah.
I have never seen anyone go in or out of it.
They do, they do. Trust me, they do.
They do.
That's more of a comfort knowing that it's being used, because that is why I thought, why it's there. I never saw anybody.
Yeah.
But if it's being used, that's better.
Okay. All right, joke, right?
Yes.
All right. So an old-fashioned lady wrote a letter to a campground to ask about the facilities before booking a camping spot. She didn't know quite how to ask if there were bathrooms on site or if she had to use the one in her RV, nor could she bring herself to write the word toilet. In her letter, after much deliberation, she wrote down bathroom commode. Then thought, still being too direct for a polite letter, she simply wrote, does the campground have its own B.C.? The campground owner simply could not figure it out. The, what the B.C. reference was. Hoping somebody else would know, she showed the letter to several campers, but they were just as confused. Then one person thought, maybe it's the Baptist church just up the road. Since it's holding a number of summer activities. So she sat down and she wrote the following reply. Pleased to inform you that a B.C. is located nine miles north of the campground. It's capable of seating 250 people at a time. I admit it's quite a distance, and if you're in the habit of going regularly, but no doubt you will be pleased to know that a great number of people take their lunches along and make a day out of it. They usually arrive early and stay late. It's such a beautiful facility, and the acoustics are marvelous. Even the normal delivery sounds can be heard. The last time my wife and I went, it was so crowded, we had to stand the whole time. It may interest you to know that a supper is planned to raise money to buy more seats. If you decide to come to our campground, there are a few people here who would be delighted to go with you for your first time, sit with you and introduce you to other folks. Sincerely, campground owner. Thank you, guys, have a good afternoon.